How's it going?
Pretty good. How about you, buddy?
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay, we have everybody, so we will go ahead and start the meeting Monday, June 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Dana Nielsen?
Here.
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 Luke Benz?
Here.
Here.
And Brian did let us know that he was unable to attend tonight, so that will move us into approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
And Jason, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote.
Okay, that is approved.
Takes us into the public hearing for proposal to sell certain property located within the amended and restated urban renewal area lot 3 Airport Road, Platte 6. So we will open the public hearing. Karen, did we receive any comment?
Um, we're continuing to see a comment wasn't in the objection or something that we talked to you about that parcel, but I just.
Um, no, it was to the west. It was the 19.26 acres to the west, yep.
Other than that.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in the public forum?
I'd be happy to share a little bit.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. John Hall with the Nevada Economic Development Council. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this project forward in front of you tonight. This is the land sale component of the project. The project will be back in front of you at some later date as it looks to go through the IEDA process and seek approval from the IEDA board. This project at last, I had worked or heard from them, was about a $60 to $65 million cold storage facility. Would be about 240,000 square feet and have a height between 60 and 70 feet tall. It would be an automated cold storage facility and ultimately would support a number of industries in the area, including the Burke Corporation. So we're pretty excited about the project. While job creation will be somewhere around the 40 number and not, you know, a really tremendous number for that size of a facility. Given our tight labor market, we see this as a great win for what we've got here in the region. As well as our continued opportunities to expand some additional industries, additional food production that may need cold storage facilities. So I ask for your guys' approval and support of moving forward with the sale of this land for this project. And we'll be back before you with additional information as we continue to move through this process. Entertain any questions? I don't know if they can ask questions during public hearing?
Sure.
Okay, I'd entertain if you guys have any questions.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for the public hearing? Then seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, move to resolution number 111, 2020, 2021. A resolution approving disposition of urban renewal property by in between the city of Nevada, Iowa and developer and authorization enter into purchase agreement.
Move to.
Sorry.
Dan and Jason, discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Andy and Luke, discussion?
It was Barb.
Oh, sorry. Even without the Plexiglas. Barb and Luke. Okay, discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved. Takes us to appointments. There's several reappointments in front of you.
Move to approve all four.
I'll second that.
Luke and Sandy to approve the appointments. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, which takes us into the public forum, which is time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. First, we have a special presentation for Officer of the Year award. So I don't know who's taking point on that, but it looks like Director Martinez will pick it off.
Good evening. It's always nice to see an officer get recognized for the hard work that they do. So I'm going to have Sergeant Henderson talk about the nomination. It's our guest speaker and Chief Burgess, who will give the award, so.
Good evening. So back in early spring, the chief sent us a nomination form for the Officer of the Year from the IPCA. As for the Officer of the Year for community policing in community under 10,000 people for the year 2020. The command staff kind of collectively agreed that Officer Hutton was a good nomination, so I was chosen to nominate him. Officer Hutton has always kind of been our unofficial community policing officer with his non-traditional style. He's not wearing it right now, but he usually wears his bucket hats on patrol. Oh, it's there. During the peak of the pandemic in 2020, he did a lot of things to bring the community together, like the bear hunt. He did the Choctaw Walk where he drove around and like basically awarded people with ice cream for the best Choctaw Walk drawings on their sidewalks and their driveways. He was a part of the drive-in movie that they had in last year at some point during the spring.
Also, he did the parody video for the Halloween, the COVID mask. He was a part of that.
And then he had a good lead role in the snowman coloring contest in December. Those are just a few of the things that he's done. Officer Hutton's always been kind of, he does things behind the scenes too that aren't as visible to the public on Facebook. It's not uncommon for me to show up at a call and the person that I'm interacting with talks about how Officer Hutton bought him pizza from Casey's because he hasn't eaten in a couple of days. Or takes kids to get ice cream because they had a bad day at school, you know? So it's things like that that I felt Officer Hutton was very deserving of this. And I can speak for the department when I say he's done an excellent job serving our community and we all appreciate it. So with that, I'll turn it over to the IPCA president and the police chief of Newton, Rob Burgess. Present your word.
Thanks for having me. Honored to be here tonight. Obviously, it's even more of an honor to be here when we get to recognize one of our finest here in Nevada and finest in Iowa. So typically, the Iowa Police Chiefs Association awards these type of honors at our annual conference. I mean, Quorville. Due to COVID, obviously, a few things have changed. And last year, we had the opportunity to present this award in the actual community where the officers served. And we found there was a lot of, a lot more recognition of that officer within their own community. And meant a lot more in that setting versus giving the award at a conference with a bunch of old crusty chiefs standing around or sitting around. So it's great to be here. It's great to represent the Iowa Police Chiefs Association. We're an association that represents over 225 law enforcement executives around the state. And that is impactful because this award is one that's reviewed by many of those chiefs. So we get an opportunity to see the work that's being done around the state and with our own communities. And when we see a nomination like this come through with Officer Hutton's performance over the past 18 months or throughout 2020. It's amazing to see the imagination and the creativity that was put into the engagement, the intentional engagement that he put into serving this community and serving this community in a way that actually lifted some spirits, I would imagine, during a rough time, not only in our country due to the pandemic, but due to other issues going on in our country. So very unique in terms of what he did. We didn't see anything in terms of creativity from any of the other nominees, and we got plenty of nominees for this category, which we do every year. So that just means even more in that sense. So I'll stop rattling on here. I will say that Chief Martinez has been a great asset to our association. And the partnership that Nevada Police Department has with our association is just an extension of this award here. So without further ado, I would like to award Officer Hutton with the Community Policing Award for 2020.
Take your hand.
Yeah, absolutely.
COVID's over.
Yeah.
Maybe you're in assumption.
We'll do the photo.
See where they stand.
Thank you for having me. Keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
On behalf of myself and the council, we want to thank Officer Hutton for all the hard work he puts in. And I think you hit the nail on the head with all the creative things that were done last year in a unique time. Definitely stands out, so we appreciate all your hard work. The next item on the public forum would be the Juneteenth Day proclamation. Again, I won't read it all. It's in your packet in front of you. Something that I'm proud to do and got a lot of really good feedback last year. Most of the time, my proclamation's still unnoticed, but that one was appreciated by many in the community. So proud to do it again this year. Moves it into, is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Okay, then we'll close the public forum and move into old business. There's old business. A, approved pay request number 12 for the central business system project from construct incorporating the amount of $495,239.64.
Move to approve. Second.
And Luke, any discussion? And seeing none, council, please vote. Takes us to item B, approved pay request number five and number six for wastewater treatment facility phase one from Went Hold Excavating, the amount of $247,453.91 and $220,604.96.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Barb, discussion? Okay, council, please vote. Takes us into item C, discussion appropriate follow-up on request to reduce the portion of the sewer charge on 414 E Avenue.
We can talk about it after we. Have we ever credited for watering their grass? I understand they improved it. I appreciate that they approved it, improved it. But this is all about watering their grass. I understand broken pipelines and stuff like that, but. Any precedence of us? We have?
At one of the new houses out there. Maybe you're in assumption.
We'll do the photo.
She's framing the show.
See where they stand.
Thank you for having me. Keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And on behalf of myself and the council, we want to thank Officer Hutton for all the hard work he puts in. And I think you hit the nail on the head with all the creative things that were done last year in a unique time. Definitely stands out, so we appreciate all your hard work. The next item on the public forum would be the Juneteenth Day proclamation. Again, I won't read it all. It's in your packet in front of you. Something that I'm proud to do and got a lot of really good feedback last year. Most of the time, my proclamation's still unnoticed, but that one was appreciated by many in the community. So proud to do it again this year. Moves it into, is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Okay, then we'll close the public forum and move into old business. There's old business. A, approved pay request number 12 for the central business system project from construct incorporating the amount of $495,239.64.
Move to approve. Second.
And Luke, any discussion? And seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to item B, approved pay request number five and number six for wastewater treatment facility phase one from Went Hold Excavating, the amount of $247,453.91 and $220,604.96.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Barb, discussion? Okay, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us into item C, discussion appropriate follow-up on request to reduce the portion of the sewer charge on 414 E Avenue.
We can talk about it after we. Have we ever credited for watering their grass? I understand they improved it. I appreciate that they approved it, improved it. But this is all about watering their grass. I understand broken pipelines and stuff like that, but. Any precedence of us? We have? Oh, I think I remember that now. That wasn't too long ago, maybe three or four years ago, tops.
Turn the water on at their home for the first time when they arranged for the water to be turned on. Is there something in writing that explains that sewer is related to the water, that the water consumption? The assumption is that that water is, because that was very different to us when we moved from Southern Iowa. They were totally separate tools. I mean, we had two different meters. And so it was, we were really surprised that those two things were interlocked. And it makes perfect sense, but looking at the weather and I'm watering my garden for the first time in probably 15 years already because it's so dry. And I don't expect, I expect to shoulder that responsibility. I'm making a choice to water my garden.
I don't believe that there is anything that explains that. Karen and I have talked about a dual or another meter to get hooked up on new builds, but I don't think we have anything in the ordinance right now that requires that, but.
There is a section that talks about.
Right. Right. And in this case, it wouldn't be there. What's the cost? Do you know the relative cost associated with that extra?
I do not know. That may be Sean Ludwig might know, have a better idea about it, but.
Yeah.
Because that might be the happy compromise in this case, was to just arrange for that purchase and installation. Unless it's more than.
Oh, it's way more than what they're asking for.
I can tell you from my personal experience, because I had that done, it was like $700 to get a separate meter plumbed. I mean, for us, it made sense, but wouldn't in all cases. Not as a compromise.
It's not a compromise.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had no way of knowing. Like I said, we rarely, we rarely water anything more than potted plants, but this year's different. And I don't expect to come to the council and ask for that.
I don't know. I'm struggling a little bit on this one just because. I get it. It didn't go down the sewer, most likely. It went into the grass, but they made a conscious decision to, as you said, water their grass. They're benefiting by having a nicer place that they can either rent or resell and recoup the money that they put into it. And I do appreciate that they're making a nice lawn. I get that part too, it's just.
Usually pretty easy to know when, you know, the pipe broke and the water poured out for a week while nobody was home too, where this is not quite.
They turned down their sprinkler to water their grass. So. It's not a huge amount either.
Got torn on that one.
I think you hit on it earlier with your first question about setting a precedent and if there would be more similar requests.
Yeah, because if it's, there's one now, I mean, with the weather, the way, the weather pattern.
Everybody's gonna be watering their grass and getting a credit.
Yeah.
I made my grass green again. Give me a credit. So I don't know.
Well, we have policy, and this isn't the policy. That's how I look at it. Our policy is around a broken, you know, something's broken. There's evidence of much more usage than a one-time double fee, so.
Evidence of an accident or something breaking instead of just.
Random.
Right.
Potential, in this case. Yeah. It's an owner's choice.
We need to vote on this, then?
Nobody's.
There's been no motion made.
Motioned, yeah. So if there's no motion, we don't vote.
We've had discussions, so we probably need a motion. Because we've had discussions, so should we have had the motion first?
Technically, yeah. I mean, but you can choose to do nothing.
Would that disapprove?
We typically don't move, I mean, to vote it down, but. Appropriate follow-up is?
So how would they be informed that we did not approve this request?
We can either give them a call, we can send them a letter, we can email them, but probably the fastest route would be to give them a call and let that inform them and what the answer was.
Can you let them know about some finance? I mean, we can finance that a bit, you know? We can, as long as they're paying towards that. We've done that before, where people owed a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
We broke that. They didn't.
Spread it over months? Yeah, pay as you go, kind of.
Yeah, if we could, because that arrangement has been made prior and I, that seems, especially if they're new to community and didn't know that those two things were attached as carefully as they are.
I'd be on board for that.
Yeah, make that a motion. I think that's good. Yeah, you got it.
Okay, so what's, yes, I move that we deny the request, contact Ms. Pierce by telephone and offer her the opportunity to finance, what's the word? Yeah, to spread the payments, to make smaller payments on this bill for some duration that's acceptable to whatever we usually do. Oh, don't make me do these things.
Okay, everybody clear?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Good job, Barb.
We're gonna hang in.
I like that one.
Great.
But what it all in?
What is the real word?
Got all that, Karen? The payment plan. Thank you. Give me the real words.
There's a set of old business and a new business. There's resolution 112, 2020, 2021. Resolution approving updated job descriptions and new evaluation tool for all employees.
I move for approval.
Second.
Sandy and Dane, discussion?
Even as we're approving them, there is some flexibility on a case-by-case basis as new things, you know, new responsibilities or new sharing. I know that there were a couple, especially in public safety and some other places that said, and other duties. Well, they all say, and other duties as assigned, but there were some intentional linkages that looked like they were starting to the, you know, to partnerships, the whole team, beyond the whole team. Yeah.
Right, yeah. So I think you're kind of referring to like the finance director and clerk type position, how they're kind of meshing and they overlap.
Right, and the community, what's the officer, community officer?
CSO, yeah, community service officer.
Maybe able to.
Gonna be dragging the softball fields, right?
Yeah, but there could be some other code enforcement.
As duty applies, right? Yeah, no, there, yeah, there is some flexibility with those job description and within the pay range as well. Yeah, and then the evaluations, the evaluations are set up per department. So the department heads have selected which competencies that they would like for each one of their staff members or positions.
When we look at the tool competencies, the core competencies for all employees, and it's communication, customer service, dependability, integrity, job knowledge, teamwork. What kind of training do we offer on some of those things like communication, customer service focus, that type of stuff, to make sure they know what is expected?
That's a great question. I think that we could have more ideas on how we could offer better training on providing that better customer service, communication and things like that. But as of right now, I think we're just, we go off how we've done things and how we do things right now, which is email and going to each other's office and things along those lines, setting up the meetings and everything. But if you have, if you have any ideas on any type of training classes or anything, I would be more than happy to talk with you about it so we can get something set up. Because I do think that we can always improve on customer service especially, as well as communication.
I have some ideas on that, too.
Yeah, I'd love to see some type of continuing training on that for, I mean, everybody here is in customer service to one degree or another with their job with the city, so.
Yeah.
We haven't passed annual training for customer service the last couple of years, obviously COVID.
Right.
But we usually typically have yearly also.
Oh, good.
I think Luke brings up a really good point, though, to reinforce those competencies. Like even have your management team look at which ones do we need to start with for, you know, which of those six should we think right away? We want to have some training.
Yeah, and set expectations for the staff. Yeah.
And the same when we look at the department heads and we talk about conflict management and leadership, fiscal accountability. I know we have that with, like, the league has a lot of different stuff like that, but conflict management leadership. I don't know that the league really is specific on that, so diving into that would be good, I think. Go out to a camp and do some trust falls of some kind.
I'd like to ask one more question about the second, oh, sorry, the third whereas on page 49, where it talks about non-union employees. The score will be their salary increase and union employees will use the same tool, but theirs is negotiated. Is that, without having the official evaluation, is that how it's been before? I thought when we talked before, that as the union contractor was being negotiated, others that were not union also benefited from a similar percent increase.
Well, the, so the union does get a set increase, and that was set by the union. So I think what we're getting at by there is if the union is going to get, let's just say, a 1% increase, if the union is going to get a 1% increase. So I think what we're getting at by there is if the union is going to get, let's just say a one percent increase, if the union is going to get a one percent increase, then everyone else within the organization would get a one percent increase as well.
So that's their employee salary increase within the comp, as, and moving them up in that range as well, okay? Because it just makes it, the way it's, what it, it felt like it was different than what we'd had prior to twenty twenty-one, so.
Other discussion? Okay, and seeing none, council please vote. Luke takes us to item B, ordinance number ten eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and ordinance amending chapter fifteen and chapter seventeen, mayor and council compensation. This one, Jordan will do most of the background on, Karen emailed me Thursday before she sent out the packet, asking me if it could be included. Had she asked before, we had research, I probably would've said, don't worry about it, however, she already had the research put together, so I told her to put it in front of all of you, and then since then, after reviewing particularly the council column, it's clear we are an outlier, and I don't think it's been discussed probably since twenty ten maybe. So fair to, fair to bring up after that time, I don't know when the rates were set, because it was sometime before that, I'm sure, so I'll let Jordan take over.
Yeah, so originally this was set up to go into the wage study and it did not get put in there, so that was, that is the real intent on why we brought this up, no council members brought this up to us or anything, so Karen went out and she got, got a whole bunch of information on the communities that you can see in front of you for the mayor and council compensation, as you can see, we are below a lot of them, you guys do a lot of work as, as we've grown over the last year even, I have noticed that your guys' job has increased, so we felt that twenty-five a meeting was extremely low and especially for the mayor with him being at twenty-four hundred, you're just very active and we felt that it was better to get you more on the, the same field as everybody else.
Approve it and we can talk about it after. Everybody else is willing to second.
I'll second.
Yeah, Jason and Barb, discussion?
So my initial reaction of course is, no, no, we're not gonna get a raise, nobody's here sitting behind the desk here doing this for any money, obviously not, not for twenty-five bucks a meeting, that was never, never part of the whole reason why we're sitting here. But as I told somebody else, you know, we are definitely grossly underpaid for the stuff that we do, I mean, I know Barb probably spends a minimum of an hour going through that council packet each time, a minimum.
That's because I have to be.
I know, and that's, that's your time, you know, but that's part of what you, you signed up for, you knew what you signed up for when you did it, same, same here. You know, I read a lot slower than you, Barb, so it takes me even longer. And I probably don't read it as in detail as you do. So as far as, you know, the money for the council, I could care less about that part. It hits my bank, I don't even notice it's in there, so it's not a big deal. For the mayor, I do know the mayor has, does so much work for the city that I have no issue whatsoever, you know, giving that raise without even thinking twice about it. It just sucks for us as council members to have to vote for our pay raise, nobody else in the world votes their pay raise except for Congress and, you know, senators and state representatives, which they do that without any issue, so why not us once in a while? But I don't know when the last time we did vote a raise for the council, obviously it's before anybody probably sitting here, can I remember, Karen, do you?
I'd love to throw back to two thousand.
Nothing.
That changed it and there was.
So. Yeah, and before looking at that chart, I probably would've said no, but after looking at the chart that you did provide us with and I'm, I'm gonna assume you guys didn't cherry pick anything, it's just the same amount of population as what we got, yeah, yeah, we can, other than Atlantic, we could probably.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing to look at is.
Go for a little raise.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you guys are, you are public servant and yes, you are doing this not because of the money, but like you said, you're taking time out of your week, out of your family, out of your personal life, so I mean, why not get a little bit more than a little, you know?
Well, it's not just meetings that we, it takes time, you know. Yeah, our time is more spent outside this chambers doing things than it is in this chambers doing things, so.
Wouldn't you guys do committee meetings that probably weren't the case back when this was set to, that isn't part of that official meeting? Because my reaction is opposite of yours, it was, I don't need it, but you guys should get it, so, right. I thi-, I think we're all in that same position too, so I mean, for me, it's, you know, things like your fieldhouse pledges, that's what I would choose to do because it's awkward for any of us to have the conversation, but it's, it's for the future elected officials after, after election and things like that, so it's really people that come after us, what's that?
You saying we're not gonna be back?
Um, well.
I mean, yeah, that was one of my first things was.
So like, every council, like, because it goes back to, I was on council and Tom Holler brought it up, and we said the same thing you're saying is, you know, we don't want it for us, but we think we're, like, that it's, it's very low and future councils should get more, so nobody wanted to do it though, for the same reason you're articulating, so it's a chicken or the egg.
Right. And I know it's probably not a popular thing for us to even, you know, say I'm for it, but as you said, it's, it's not necessarily for us, it could be for the future people that won't want to do it either, but.
And that was one thing I mentioned to Jordan earlier, is maybe there's like a five-year or ten-year review that we try to trigger in there so that it doesn't have to be
Go twenty-one years.
Yes, twenty or thirty years without being looked at.
Yeah, like, I think Karen brought up every five years, getting something set in place, that way we can review it every, was it five years that you said? Yeah, but yeah, get something in place that we can review it frequently.
Yeah, I think it's crappy, we've gotta vote for our raises.
That's gonna be the council every, every time, you know, so.
And that's, I would be all for setting up something like that.
I'd just rather see it be an automatic, you know, X percent every year instead of, and in perpetuity and it's done with then, having to talk about it like that.
Can you do that?
I don't think you can do that.
You can't do that?
I think it's gotta be, no, I think you.
Gotta be reviewed by the council and voted on each time?
I think so. I don't know, we don't see this very often, it doesn't happen, but I think you've gotta look at the, the current time that's being put in and make it somewhat based on that.
Okay.
I've never seen it where it's just a percentage increase, but have you ever seen that? Yeah, I've never seen, I've never seen that.
Or straight dollars, you know, whatever.
Can you make it include their committee meetings or does it only? Like, can the language be amended for that?
An addition, you can do like fifty meeting and ten.
But then there's some ones that we don't do everything either, and that feels weird. I mean, I kinda like.
Yeah, I think it gets tricky though when you start looking at, like, what hat are you wearing all the time, right? Are you, what, how are you wearing when you're in the community?
I'm thinking about like our council development committee and our council budget committee, and when we have official city committees that take place here, aren't included in there.
Yeah.
You can get paid a certain amount for a council meeting and then additional meetings like ten dollars or fifteen dollars for an additional meeting, but like Aaron was, yeah, I was gonna say, like, what Aaron says is it, it's, it gets kinda cloudy when you get into that.
I think we have a cleaner system, but I also like the idea of building in the, if we can't do a percentage, could we do like a five-dollar raise a year or something? That makes sense, so it doesn't get so stagnant and out of line with what's going on in the rest of the place.
I would, I would prefer having it just be a docketed like every few years, like, I like the five-year plan. Instead of it just being an automatic thing that's gonna increase, because the duties, I mean, every council, council people take on different things, right? Like, sometimes you are spending, some councils spend significantly more time in the community or doing their work than others, so I think you, I think it's better to review it periodically than have an automatic increase.
We could make the motion that we would approve it, I'll do it, make the motion that we approve the proposal with the understanding that it will continue to be reviewed annually.
So we already have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
So Jason and Barb.
I need to record the three readings, because, and ordinance.
Yeah.
So we can make changes on the next, next reading as well.
I think another thing we need to kinda see that we're, we're paid very differently and at a much lower number than the rest of the employees, but we're giving ourselves a much higher percentage raise than anybody else has received on the wage study.
That was.
And I know it's completely different, but it's also not different in the eyes of all the employees.
Honestly, I don't have a problem with being underpaid as a councilman and I, I agree that we do a lot of things outside this room and that's where our jobs are and, and I don't for a second think that any of us in this room is here for the money. I don't have a problem with being underpaid because I, at the end of the day, this is a service to me and I, there's not really a dollar sign I can attach to the family time that I give up these things, whether it be twenty-five or two hundred, obviously that would be nice, but that's kinda where I'm at, I actually initially had the opposite of Brett when I read this, I, I thought the mayor made a lot more sense because of how much time he puts in, but, I mean, that's just where I'm at. And I, I see both sides of that, that case, but I, I do think the message that we send to the city and the staff is, is also valid, Luke.
Well, one that we haven't mentioned is the value of this effort too. You know, and again, I'm certainly not here for the dollars, but I think demonstrating that there is a value and there is an effort and a, a work ethic that goes with being a councilperson, isn't a bad message to send to our employees and to our community.
Well, you guys did put in a lot of time and effort on the wage study that Luke mentioned for everyone to bring it in the line and I think part of the reason why this is a more, a larger percentage is it hasn't been touched in a lot longer of a time, if you were to take our employee wages in nineteen ninety and compare them to now, I don't know what the change would be, but it would be more than what we just saw in that change.
Get it to the second reading, we need to approve it, right? The way it is right now.
I can amend, right?
Yeah, you can amend your, your motion.
We wanna do every five then? Revisit it every five years?
Every four would align with elections.
Elections.
Oh.
Or every two or something like that? I'd say two or four, if you wanna do that.
Do we want it to align with elections? We'll do every four, that's fine. I will amend my motion to approve ordinance number ten eighteen to also include revisiting every four years, just to be sure that we're in line or comparable to other cities or sites.
And that's second.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, seeing none, council please vote.
It wasn't that easy, Jason.
Okay, so that is approved, so that'll come back for a second reading, moves us to new business C, approved purchase of eight sets of fire turnout gear for the fire department.
Move to approve?
Second, Jason and Dane, any discussion?
Are there different options on that one? Or is it just?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I should've said the option.
I know there are different bids.
Yep, bid number from athletics, bid number one, sorry, for three thousand five hundred eighty dollars and fifty-two cents.
I amend my second.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so now clear on the motion, any discussion on that?
I was just wondering about the track record for these, is in the first, in their first year of service, the track record for responding to calls?
Yeah, I was hoping to play the Jeremy card here and how he buys trucks and just sits back there quietly and, so I was worried about that. So, yeah, actually, we currently have forty-nine members, what we typically have done is get them through their first year to make sure that they're gonna be with us long-term, once they reach that one-year mark, they have worked through all the vehicles and that typically puts them on permanent status as a volunteer. We have ten people that do not have NFPA compliant gear, they have old gear, it works, but it's not seventeen oh one compliant, and so there is some risk in not putting firefighters in that, but I think as you look nationally, there are probably ninety-nine percent of the stations do not have NFPA compliant gear, so I think as a testament to our track record and what we've been doing, I can tell you for attendance, our new people are attending, in fact, this morning I had three brand-new people on a fire engine, and so our training process is ramped up and we're pretty happy with the folks that we're putting on, we're, we're very diligent in our efforts to recruit and they go through a thirty-day probationary training period just to see if they're gonna show up, or they spend thirty days that they can't even go on a call. So after thirty days, if they're showing up every Wednesday and showing up on calls to help wash hose and do that, we're, we're pretty convinced that they're gonna be with us long-term. And so if that answers your question, our, we budgeted forty thousand dollars in our capital for new bunker gear, that'll put everyone in a hundred percent gear except for our twoest new members, but we'll have, as you can see with a little bit of gap in there, we kinda wanna see where these first eight go because they're off probation and then we'll have the money to get on the gear, the reason this is coming to you now is because there's a six-month turnaround on bunker gear, so to get these folks going, this is actually next capital budget, starting July one, but we want to get it in front of the council so we could get going, and they have been measured, the gear is ready, all they're waiting is for approval to get the gear going.
You had your justification for the twelve hundred dollar difference in price?
Yeah, so we purchased Viking gear last time and what we're seeing in the industry is you have to either go really thin on gear or you have to go with really good gear, this is not the most expensive gear on the market, it's a little above medium, but one of the things that we see with athletics gear is that it's actually measured for the individual firefighter with a little bit of room to grow, but the athletics gear, what we're seeing is it wears a lot better, takes heat a lot better. The Viking gear that we ordered two years ago, the Viking gear, what, what we're seeing with that is the stripings coming off, the stitching's coming off, the suspenders we had to resew ourselves because they were in the middle of the back and not over the shoulders, when we went to the vendor and said, look, are you having these problems with anybody else, and they said, no, we're not, and so I can't believe that in Nevada, Iowa, our folks are so much harder on gear than anybody in the country, but we could be, but our folks, we see a lot more fires than most people do around the county as well, so we are the second busiest department in the county, so our folks are wearing gear all the time, one of the things that we're trying to do to help, like we did all along, is getting some really solid rescue gear that they can wear on these accidents and on the stuff that's gonna get them ripped, and so we're trying to get two sets of gear, NFPA actually recommends two sets of NFPA compliant gear to the tune of about eight grand plus rescue gear, just to meet the NFPA standard, so what we're kinda hoping we can do is start cycling some of those Viking gear in as their second set of gear while we get the athletics gear, but overall, it's a much better product. I knew it was gonna be a problem because it costs so much, but again, I was thinking about bringing a set in here so you kinda see the difference in wearability, but everybody that's got the athletics gear without a doubt says it's very comfortable, one of the things that has helped us is that our boots are transitioning so they can carry their boots a lot longer than they were, their helmets are lasting a lot longer than we thought they would, so we're seeing some of the incidental stuff that costs four hundred at a shot lasting a little bit longer.
So, okay, so we've been using the athletics. So, okay, so we would use the athletics and the Viking then?
Yes, we would, we would use the Viking for.
Then you already have athletic, athletics gear now or no?
I have about 10 sets of athletics gear, maybe 12, and then we're going to just can start cycling athletics gear in there if we can, but all of the gears are going up July 1 and we're just trying to beat the rush on the order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why, why cycle into the newest members and not to the established members of the?
Uh, the established members already have NFPA compliant gear, so all of their gear meets, uh, standards. So, and then as, uh, new members that attend a higher call volume are, uh, wearing out their Viking gear, they're getting athletics gear. So the 10 sets that you've seen are, are going, we're, we're, we're typically not seeing our folks that are attending low call volumes. We're typically not seeing them in athletics gear just yet, their, their Viking gear is lasting, so.
Other discussion?
Thank you.
Great, seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. That takes us into reports, starting with city administrator.
Uh, other than my report that I sent, let's see, Sunday, I do not have any other, other, anything else to say unless you guys have questions for me. Should I be happy to answer?
Is Jeremy here tonight on the Zoom at all?
He's not, no.
I, I don't expect you to know, but I had a question this week about the ash trees in town that are marked or looks like they need to be taken down. Do we have a timeframe on that at all or?
Tim might have a better answer for that, but, uh, we had a meeting regarding the ash trees. I believe it was about a month ago and we are, we have money set aside for taking it down. I believe we just have to figure out when we're going to be doing it. Jeremy is planning on taking down some of the smaller ones, but we're going to have, have to have, say, Rob's Tree Service or someone, uh, take down the bigger ones, but that is a plan that we're, we're going to be doing that.
Durachio damaged trees that are somewhat up but not completely, you know, like had damage or something like that? Are those all taken care of or is there more of that to do still too?
I believe we have all of the hangers taken care of, but, uh, I can double check with, with Jeremy and, and Tim and see where they're at with it, but I believe they have the majority of that taken care of and they are working on the, the bad trees that are on ride of ways because I know that they did get to one of those a couple of weeks ago over on 10th, I think it was.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else for Jordan? Okay, then moving on to reports, uh, you do see, I alluded to it earlier, uh, the pledge sheets for the fieldhouse in front of you. Um, we're in the public phase and Jordan and I have turned mine in, so I was asked to bring those to the rest of you tonight. So you can do those as you wish. And then we also are looking for help to get to folks because, um, when they did score, they had about 200 volunteers going door-to-door. And with, uh, when we had the public plan was COVID, we still were uncertain, so that's why we did appointments versus us going to people's homes. We might have to do some creative things like that, but we need the help of all of you to help us, like help work your networks to try to get, um, folks committed to the project, so. Because of the grant timeline, our public campaign end might kick back a little bit because the state grants, I believe it's August we apply for and maybe they're awarded September, something like that. So it's later than we were hoping. In the past years it had been grants were opened in June for July dispersments for the fiscal year, but because of, um, budgetary things with, I think probably COVID-related, they weren't sure until the end of session what they were going to get. And so administratively, they won't have it open as early as we'd like. So that's a little bit of change on our timeline because you guys probably won't see it until, because we can't break, we can't start the actual construction of the facility until the state's looked at that and reviewed it. We can do site prep though, so that's one thing you might see something in front of you ahead of time for some site prep type work because that can be done before the state gets, reviews it, so that makes sense on all that.
But what's the timeline for the, the funders?
I mean, uh, we were hoping to have that wrapped up in June. So that's still our goal is to get as much of that done this month as we can. There is a rotary event on the 19th that directly related to this. It was supposed, supposed to be a big celebration too to try to increase awareness and excitement about it, but. But really, if you're talking to folks, what we're, we want them to know, one, to fully understand the project, which you guys do, so you're fully briefed to be able to talk to them and also have, have, so that they know that they can do it over five years because that changes everybody's math a lot if they know that they can spread it out farther.
What's the event on the 19th that I haven't, I for one haven't heard anything about?
It's a wine and beer tasting. So basic, the, the Rotary created an event, a wine and beer tasting, and all the proceeds will be going to the fieldhouse forum. And that is on Saturday night. I do not know who all has tick, the 19th, right, Saturday? Yeah, um, I do not know who all has the tickets. I know there was one person in this room that had tickets, but I don't know if he still has any tickets. There you go. Our chief has tickets over there, so if you'd like to purchase tickets, they are 25 a piece. You could also reach out to Michelle Casabon or, or Dick Prignitz with, uh, Hertz Farm Management and talk with them about it. They'd be happy to get you some, but it is Saturday, show up, it's going to be fun. All the proceeds go to the fieldhouse, so good benefit.
Anything else about Fieldhouse, all that clear? Okay, On Track have been cutting, it's hard to believe it was just two weeks ago because I, I froze my tail off. It was really cold, but it was a, it was a really good event, uh, and they're, they're going to have a beautiful facility out there. And my only wish is that it was closer to the highway so you can see it more because it's going to be a really impressive facility. But, uh, they, very well done and exciting to see them expand here in town. I'll let somebody else talk more about the community coffee, but that was really refreshing to be able to meet with folks and do that again. We had some of our normal frequent flyers we got to hear from that used to do before, so it was good to visit with them again. And, um, they have lots of questions about things they're hearing, so they're the type of people that like to go out and then correct the record with everybody else they talk to, so it'll be good. And then Jordan and I went to the DOT meeting in Oskaloosa last week to talk more about Highway 30, so got to present on that in person with the commissioners, so we'll see if that, hopefully it keeps it in front of, in front of them. But we talked about, uh, the land sale tonight of the 50 acres and the plan for that. We talked about On Track and we talked about what Verbio is doing with, with rail and having more traffic because of that. So hopefully giving them that economic development update helps keep us at the front of their thoughts.
When do they do their five-year?
I think it's April, so we're not in this, we didn't make this one and we presented in October, so I wanted to stay in front of them. And, um, one thing we'll be working with John on is to kind of come up with a one-pager type thing about all the traffic counts that we're adding because of these projects to get to the engineers because they drive a lot of the decision-making too. So our district engineer will need to continue to be looped in. Any other questions for me? Council reports.
Well, Luke put together a spectacular golf team that participated in the Main Street event last Friday, so that was really fun and a good team builder, Jason, my cart friend, and yeah, it was good.
Good event overall, but Main Street, I think they did pretty well.
They did.
I agree with, uh, echo the mayor, having coffee in person was really nice and for not having done it in almost a year and a half, it was, it was good. I do also want to recognize Main Street also for the work they did with the, uh, community garage sales or the citywide garage sale. If, you know, my wife enjoyed that, I think a lot of people were out about, that was good to see too. Obviously, it's been a couple of years since they did it and you've got a new group organizing it who, uh, hasn't necessarily in the past. So I think they would appreciate feedback and certainly if people are willing to be involved in the future, I bet they would, would gladly take that help as well.
So speaking of coffees, look at July 10th, if you can attend, we'll just let Marla know so she knows who to promote will be there.
Do we have a topic?
No. I mean, back before we would just do whatever people, yeah, whatever they brought to us, so, um, if there's.
I can do it.
And we, we've had other community partners come, so maybe what we'll need to do is, and since I know Marla is listening, we can see if the school or another community entity would like to have a representative there since they also haven't met one in a while, in case folks have questions for them.
What about some of the community boards and commissions and things like that? Would they be able to be, that would be interesting too.
Yeah, so we'll see if there's other folks that want to, want to be there, but. It was one of you, okay, Sandy? And I'm going to mark it down for, try to block off that for myself too. Okay. Any other council reports?
Down as well if needed.
We have Barb for sure, maybe Luke, and then I will put my, oh, Sandy, sorry, Sandy for sure. That's why I'm repeating it.
He's in bad shape today.
Lot going on.
I'll sit back there.
The, uh, Masonic Lodge, what was it, two weeks ago now? Well, it'll be two weeks, well, a week and a half ago, had a, uh, food truck and food truck competition, a bag tournament and a car show and blistering heat. It was very nice. We actually raised quite a bit of money for the Backpack Buddy program. Wasn't a huge, huge crowd, but we had a lot of steady flow of people coming out. We held it at Central and Metro Park a lot, um, with, just with the construction and the alleys and stuff. We're, the configuration we were looking at just wasn't going to work out, so we held it over there. Next year we'll do it again, next year, and we'll do it downtown, so we'll be blocking the whole downtown off. I'll put in my request. So, yes, early.
Just did, it's in.
A year in advance. Thanks, chief.
You mean you don't like requests two and a half weeks out?
But, uh.
Noted.
We raised about $800 for the Backpack Buddy program, which helps feed the kids over the weekend that need it. So it was really nice. Appreciate everybody's support that came out.
Other reports? And then we'll go to staff, so don't forget we'll go to Amanda first from library.
Yeah, but it's not letting me start my video, um.
We might be able to let it, uh, see if I can figure that out. That's. Well.
Not much more to add beyond the council report. We're seeing people coming in, signing up for summer reading, which is awesome. I know Travis has been seeing a lot of people at his outdoor storytime, so it's been really nice to interact with the kids and families in the community again. And then our unfortunate news is we did have to repost the, uh, library director position. That position was offered to someone and they declined because they had accepted another position. So we're sort of back to the drawing board with that. But hopefully, hopefully this next search will work out better. And yeah, so anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Amanda?
My kids love the outdoor storytime, they had a blast, all three of them.
That's awesome.
He walks on water at our.
My gosh.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
We'll go to Ray.
Uh, just a couple of things, none in the report. I wanted to thank, uh, Jordan and Karen and Director Martinez for their involvement in the generator project. After the Durachio, we found a gap in our, uh, backup plan. And so, uh, the generator, uh, grant has been submitted and it is in FEMA's hands now, so hopefully, uh, that'll help fund a emergency generator for the fire station. 102 K Avenue is currently a nuisance that we're working on. Uh, I've been blowing up Aaron's phone and email, so about the legal questions. There's so many players involved with tax sales and stuff like that and, um, divorce decrees and stuff. So, um, we've been navigating that process. You're going to start seeing some progress on the cleanup there and, uh, the neighbors I know will be very happy if you have that award. So, um, we've been communicating with them. We, uh, went door-to-door and gave them a kind of a, here's what we're doing about it so that they know that something's happening. So, um, that'll be quite a nice project to get cleaned up. Uh, June 18th, to answer some of your questions about, uh, interacting with people, the safety committee does have certain trainings, uh, related with, uh, interacting with difficult people. On the 18th, we'll be having, uh, city employee barbecue, but part of that, uh, prior to that is leadership, training on, uh, incident and accident investigation and then, uh, hiring good practices, good practices in hiring. So, uh, we do have a number of those topics that, uh, we do kind of interject into that safety training that would help, uh, our employees. So that might provide some avenue, but not to the degree that I think you're after. And then, uh, Ju-, July 4th, uh, the Fire Department Association is doing drive-up and, uh, dine-in or out pancakes. So, um, pancake sausage breakfast like we've done pre-COVID, uh, but we will have some modifications with syrup and butter packs instead of free-for-all in the butter container. So, uh, we are taking some precautions and we'll have, uh, uh, quite a bit of staff on hand that day. So come on out and have some pancakes. And that's all I have. Thanks.
I wanted to thank Ray. Uh, it's been quite a few years ago that they did this program when we moved here, but they would come to your, the fire department would come to your house and install fire alarms. And my house is so old that we didn't have smoke alarms and, uh, they came out and they installed them all over the house. One of the things they installed was these magnetic things that go above your stove that if you have a grease fire above your stove, it boom puts out the fire. And I, we were cooking two weekends ago on our grill outside and my wife turned on the grill to, to warm it up, went inside to go grab the steaks and all the grease at the bottom of the grill caught on fire and we had four-foot flames coming out of our grill and, you know, you had the little shock, oh no, what do I do? My 13-year-old went and grabbed one of those things, comes out and says, "Dad, what'll, will this do?" I put it on the flame, closed the lid, two seconds later, pop, whole fire was out. Worked like a charm.
Yeah, stove top fire stops, uh, I was really good to hear that because, uh, we put them out in the community and we don't know if they ever work because nobody ever calls. Fire department said I had a stove fire and then put it out. But we do get, uh, that's the second request I've gotten for a replacement one, so that's really good. And, uh, the fire today, I think, was significant. It talks about our community risk reduction because those smoke alarms we put in four years ago in that house, so.
Probably same program that brought them to my house.
Yep, absolutely, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Larry?
I don't have a lot to report either, but at the next meeting you'll have a full report on all the projects. But a little bit on the downtown project, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, the contractor discovered probably at least two or three conflicts with, uh, with the wind stream cable. And, uh, we, we worked out a solution there on relocating, uh, or taking a different route with some of the underground drains, subdrains. And so you'll be seeing a little bit of a change order on that sometime in the future, but we got the problem resolved, didn't slow the construction down because Windstream is replacing, uh, a lot of conduit and, um, they're going to be doing directional drilling on most of that, but, uh, they were in the way and they couldn't be relocated, but, so anyway, uh, we got that resolved. A couple of weeks ago, we also did walkthroughs on two subdivisions, the Southland subdivision and the West F Avenue subdivision. Just walked through, uh, seeing about the site and the, all the public improvements that have been installed. And nothing major needs to be corrected, there are some cleanup items and, which are normal. And also it's nice to see there's construction started on, in both subdivisions. On Track had their groundbreaking ceremony about two and a half weeks ago. We've had high heat that day, the high was like 45 degrees, so it was a little cool for a, for a groundbreaking. Also, I'm assuming there was a permit issued for the first house at Southland, is that correct?
That is correct.
You'll see some, uh, see some groundbreaking out there, so it's good to see after all these years. The other thing is we're assisting, uh, Tim Hanson in, uh, getting some plans drawn up for the replacement of the Hattery Park Shelter that was badly damaged during the Durachio and then the city crews had to demolish that. All it took was a little shove with a backhoe and the whole thing came tumbling down. So we'll be drafting some plans up so city can get some quotes on rebuilding that. So we'll be drafting some plans up so the city can get some quotes on rebuilding that. And hopefully by this fall, we'll have new shelter up out there. As I said, you'll have a full report on the projects at the next meeting, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
We answered one from our community coffee on Saturday. We were asked when the new shelter is going to go up. Now I know the answer.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the other thing, Mike Roth is not on the, on the Zoom meeting tonight. He indicated this afternoon that he had nothing further to report except the Phase One work, which is all the site preparation is about ready for council acceptance. I believe the indication was that it'll be ready for action at the next council meeting. So the project's moving along nicely. No other major issues with the alignment of the sewer. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago and determined the preferred route is running down S fourteen, paralleling S fourteen west of the road, or east of the road somewhere. So we've got, we have alignment, and we'll all take easements from all the properties to get through there. So we'll be working on that, and I'm sure you'll hear more, more later as we try to acquire easements. So anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Director Martinez.
You have my report. You don't have anything else to add unless you have any questions for me.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Just making sure you get your steps in, that's fine, that's all.
I'm just trying to finish up the audit. We got the draft late last week, and she thought maybe after that, we should be compliant, so. I'm Emma and lots of other things, so I'm trying to get that finished up.
Counsel, anything for Karen? I'm going to go to Erin.
So with the audit, every year I'm asked to prepare a report for the city. I don't know if you guys know that, but just any ongoing issues that are out there. And so I got the message on Friday that they were looking for that. So I will get that in, and hopefully that will help wrap up the process. And then last Wednesday, we had the city development board meeting with regards to the Verbio annexation, and it was unanimously approved with lots and lots of discussion from an objector. So they now have, there's now thirty days for any interested party to appeal that decision. And if not, then it will be filed with the recorder and the state, and it will be finalized. I do expect that we will see an appeal of that decision. And then we'll, we'll go from there.
Do you know the process if it does get appealed?
Well, so typically, I've, I've never, we've never had an appeal of a hundred percent voluntary annexation. So normal, the normal process with a, an involuntary or an eighty-twenty is that you have a formal hearing. What we've had in the last two meetings was just questions from the board and the opportunity to submit additional paperwork to show that, you know, we followed all the procedures correctly and all of that. So I don't know if they're going to, honestly, I don't know if they're going to ask for a full hearing or just brief writing. So we'll see. I've never seen it with a voluntary, so.
Okay. Counsel, anything for Erin? Okay, then that concludes that, so we can take the most adjourned.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I had a request to thank Tim and the Parks Department on the cemetery's condition on Memorial Day. It was beautiful. Yeah, I know that the, the city workers and the scouts did a great job. So I'll pass that along to Tim and those folks at all possible.
I would second that. Hey, anything else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Jane and Jason, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will be adjourned.